This time, anybody wishing to address the board, they use so. No one wishes to address the board, you'll have a chance at the end of the meeting. Minutes of the previous meeting. Board, you all have copies. Is there any additions or deletions?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of the regular meeting of October 20th, 2008.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Baker. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by usual side of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Uh, bills. You all have copies of it, it was our send. Brad Gill, you got any additions?
No.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to pay the bills tonight.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Burtz. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by usual side of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Correspondents.
Hi, Mr.
Thank you, ma'am. Report to the mayor and the board of trustees. First thing on my agenda. Zoning board appointment ordinance. And I only have one, and we appointed before Steve Penfield, and I'll make that appointment again tonight. I'll put that in form of a motion.
Second.
I have a motion made by myself, seconded by trustee Jefferson. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by usual side of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Uh, we have a resolution on the change of date for the village election. Whereas the next general election for the office shall be held on Wednesday, March 18. And where state law, general village elections be held on the third Tuesday in March, however, the village has chosen to hold the election on another day. Whereas the village with the March elections, if the third Tuesday in March falls on the 17th day of March, since Patrick's Day, the board of trustees must pass a resolution that the election be held on Wednesday, March 18. Therefore, be it resolved that the village will also spite 2009, the election will be held on March 18, 2009. And this resolution should affect an addition. And it's roll call vote, and I put that in form of a motion.
Second, yeah.
Moved by myself, and seconded by trustee Jefferson. Roll call vote.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Does this mean then that all of the local elections that are normally held in March will be held, not only in Ross's Point, but will be held?
They have the choice.
Oh, they have a choice?
No. No, they have to hold it on the 18th.
They don't? Okay. She would know more than that, because she...
Just when we have St. Patrick's Day, when it falls on a Tuesday.
The holiday?
This is Ireland.
Why are we changing?
Yeah, I don't know, that's kind of funny.
State law.
It's the state law?
Yes. They went to the mayor's conference, and it was brought up by the conference of mayors.
Wow. You think they're going to hold it?
They did. It's little about now. Anyway, roll call vote. Any other discussion?
No.
Roll call vote. Roll call vote, trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Trustee Burtz.
Aye.
Trustee Baker.
Aye.
And I vote aye. The second resolution, general election, be held on 18th of March. Therefore, I'm going to read this whole thing. I'm just going to put, they will be, the offices that will be out for election as trustees, two-year term. There will be two, justice, four-year term. And I will put that in form of a motion.
Second.
Moved by the mayor, and seconded by trustee Penfield. It is a roll call vote. Trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Trustee Burtz.
Aye.
Trustee Baker.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye. How many more do you say? Oh! Okay. Next announcement. The annual Canadian Pacific Holiday Train will arrive in Ross's Point on Wednesday, November 26th, at 10:30 PM. That's the day before Thanksgiving. Should be a wonderful time, all the kids don't have to go to school, and it's halfway decent hour. This year will be stopping on our way south, allowing residents of Ross's Point to enjoy the entertainment early this time. As always requested, a donation of canned or non-perishable foods be donated for the food shell. Mark your calendars, don't miss this enjoyable event. Also, on December 5th, we have the parade of toys. And Madam Clerk, what time will that be?
6:45.
6:45. At Ross Park. Okay, it's usual hot chocolate and all that will be served. All right?
There's also, excuse me, mayor, but the library is going to be holding a reading. They're going to tell a story, a Christmas story. So that's also included this year, it's a little bit different, so. Story time.
Thank you. Next thing on the agenda, to authorize the mayor to sign the easement agreement with Dennis Richards. We finally got it. That's where that was declined. I need a motion for that effect.
I'll make a motion for authorizing the mayor to sign the easement agreement with Dennis Richards.
Second.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Burtz. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by usual side of aye.
Aye.
Those approve, uh, those... Start over again. Those not in favor? Motion passed. Next thing on the agenda, moving right along, is the approval of the JNS agreement for a three-year term. Now, what that is, uh, I sent this contract that we've all had, Dr. Mernane, and he made many, many little changes. I think you all have copies of it, like that. And the only thing they came back was, uh, JNS come back and said, well, I think I have a copy of the memo from them, that instead of a two-year, they want a three-year, they would, that. We used, we were saying two years to build, but allow them three years to build. That doesn't mean they're going to take full three years. They want to get this thing up as quick as possible, it's just...
That's the thing that bothered me most, how long?
And according, according to the code enforcement officer, we have to get a variance for that. Now, I always thought the village was exempt from that. But I don't know. I don't know that.
Where do we get our variance from?
Planning board.
Not the planning board, it's the local...
What type of variance do we need?
It's an area variance. Area variance. Tell me, speak up.
I thought Mike said use variance, but I don't know.
Oh, use variance. Well, whatever, whatever we need. But anyway, if we agree to this, the contract will be sent, be sent to me to be signed. And with all the changes that Mernane made, that was the only thing that they came back with.
Do we need the variance before we can sign the contract?
No.
And what if we don't get?
I, that would be, that's a good question. I'll have to call the board in the morning. It's going to be a while before they get...
You're talking months?
Yeah.
Well, regardless, if we need a variance, JNS won't be able to do any work anyway until they get one, right? They can't, we can't start on anything. So that might be the, a good thing to iron out in terms of the timeline.
Well, the thing is, what I'm saying is, we signed a contract, if we don't get it, we don't get it, we just, it's no involve. Well, sign the contract so that they can move, while we move.
I don't think that's the right way to do that, Joe. I don't think you could enter into a contract if there's...
I don't...
Yeah. I don't think you could sign a contract if there's something that's...
What's a couple of months, what's the difference a couple of months, they're asking for a three-year extension?
Yeah. I don't have a hard term, but I just, I don't have my...
We don't mind you signing the contract, but let's do it, make sure that we're legal.
I just want to get it moving.
Right, you understand that?
Yeah.
Let's get the variance first.
Yeah. All right. Why don't you do this, let's do this. Authorize the mayor to sign the contract with the three years after we get the variance.
Or at the very least, after we talk to Tom in terms of what, you know?
Yeah, so that, if, if, whatever.
Is it going to take, you have to put it out for bid, to have a public hearing?
Put him around.
You give a variance on the...
We don't go out, we don't have to go out for a... We have to fill out an application, we'll present the application to the planning board, the planning board will review it.
It's only...
Yes, yes, they'll review it, and then it'll go, they'll authorize for a public hearing.
Public hearing.
So it'll be, it'll be a couple of months.
Perhaps it would just be something to check with Tom.
I'll call Tom tomorrow.
See whether he wants to write something about that.
If they're, if they're there or not voting twice.
Right.
I still think that you show, authorize me to sign this on the condition that we get the variance.
We'll just bring him back for the board.
Who's that doing?
We're here.
I hate to tie to that job, but sometimes...
Sometimes, but not...
There's a little story behind that, Kelly.
At least there's three of us that will be here. Should be, if we remember.
Do you want to place it on roll, until you...
I will call Tom in the morning.
Well, I think too, if Mike's got any information, Mike take that for us on what is required. He probably wants to, to get that for us. Be a good thing to do.
Okay, next thing on my, uh, is, uh, on the agenda, I wasn't sure about this, so I had to put on, uh, we have a quote to get that piece of granite for that plaque, that bronze plaque for the pier, which comes, well come out of, I understand now, of Gretnley. So I just ask you permission to issue the purchase order for that.
Okay, I'll put that form of a motion.
Everybody's on board, I think you all got a copy of what we're looking for.
Yes, yeah.
Who's seconded it?
I do.
Oh. Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Burtz. Any other discussion? There being no other discussion, all those in favor, vote by usual side of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And let's see. Request authorization to have Melissa return Champlain Basin program of waterfront cleanup grant. If you're not aware, we got a grant of pretty close to $5,000 to clean up the tires and stuff. We started it, Costello gave us a, uh, container, and the first 50 tires, they took free. And we cleaned up the beach in that area, and that's as far as it's got, but the grant was to actually have divers go down and clean it up out of the bottom of the lake. But it never, never took place, and we've had it for two years, so we're just going to return the grant. It can be used somewhere else. Too bad. They had big ideas.
There was a lot of projects we did this year, so.
Well, some of that, the people that were going to do it just didn't update everything together. So we need an authorization to do, return it.
Okay. I'll make a motion to return the Lake Champlain Basin waterfront cleanup grant.
Second.
Moved by trustee Penfield, seconded by trustee Burtz. Any discussion? I hate returning it.
I know, but we've been pretty good.
Worse if we have it, though, and we are not able to make use of it. Then it's not a good thing either.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Last thing on my agenda is, and this is going to appear in the paper the next day or two. Composting facility located on Lilly Avenue in the goal to Ross's Point will be open Monday through Friday from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM only. The site will be closed on evenings and weekends. Residents are reminded, there will be no dumping of any item other than leaves and limbs. And the reason for this is, it has been totally, totally abused. Last week, somebody decided in a wise and wisdom way, and we don't even know where it come from, to dump a pine tree about that big, cut up in pieces about this big. And we can't do anything with it. We have to haul it away, pay to haul it away. And we are slowly, but surely, running out of room down there. And I can tell you this, folks, from my own experience, and I think Brian can tell you this, people from out of town are abusing, a lot of them are abusing it. I've seen trucks from Vermont, trucks from Champlain, trucks from Jay-Z, and I'd say trucks, any pickup truck, bringing stuff in there. There's no other, there's no other community that has this, and they, they are taking advantage of us in the way.
You know what I'd like to see down there a little bit? Is to take some of the smaller stuff and dig a spot in the ground where we can put this in and cover it with dirt and compost this out.
We do that.
I know, but, I mean, that's going to take up a lot of the stuff, so that later, when we need topsoil and stuff, instead of buy it, you know, we'll have it. You can't do it overnight, but...
All the leaves and clippings are done, like that. That from day one. Things we can't is the limbs, you can't compost the limbs.
No, no, I know that, that stuff's got to...
That's the stuff that, that's where we're getting in trouble.
You can see everywhere they're pulling.
That big tree, you know what they did? They dumped the big tree, and then they dumped all the limbs on top of it, so he wouldn't see it.
You have this only open from Monday through Friday.
Yeah.
8:00 AM until 4:00.
Yeah.
And one of the people, the residents that are here...
I'm sorry, John. John, if DEC comes in here, we're going to, they're going to nail us to the cross.
Well, you know, if we got guys at the blue building, and we have a lot of people that are, if you see these things, does anybody call anybody, or stop them, identify them, and say, "What are you doing here?"
On the weekend? There's nobody there.
But what's...
You know, you got, you got a village of how many, 24, 2500 people?
Yeah.
Residents, maybe more than that. And now these, these people, we're going to punish our own residents, because now they can't go, they're working eight to four, most of them. And they're going to clean up their yards, and I want to put their debris somewhere. So now we're going to force them to go to other places, landfills, when we have one that we could use?
Our landfill is just about had it. Call the bank, Brian will tell you. We're running out of...
I'm not saying that's not a problem, well, they're, they're up there burning stuff sometimes, they're burning trees and stuff.
They burn it as much as they can, but...
Well, every time I go up there, it's once a week. Maybe not that often, sometimes in the summertime, when I, or in the fall of the year, and I love the leaves here in the ranches, they're falling, and I try to go up, so I know the guys are busy, but, you know, it's pretty convenient, I mean, I'm fortunate I'm retired, but how about the people like cleaning their yards up on weekends, what are you...
I know it's convenient, Charlie. I use it. I bring my leaves up there, I'll cut the bags, I usually, I do it.
It's something that ought to be open at least on Saturday, from like eight to four.
And then you want to hire somebody up there to watch it?
Well, we got people.
We don't have anybody up there on Saturday.
Well, I think it's, I think it's pretty...
Don't forget, when people are cutting all the brush and stuff, it's making the village look nicer, so. We're getting something out of that, too, it's just making the place look better.
What is the issue, George, with the DEC?
Well, first of all, if you come right down to it, and I...
Maybe we shouldn't say that.
I ain't going to say it.
Maybe we shouldn't go there on...
I'll say afterwards, I'll say afterwards.
Well, what I mean is...
I'll watch on camera.
But it's a public meeting, I mean, are we doing something we shouldn't be doing?
Eventually, you're going to have to chip all your brush. The days of open burning is coming to an end. They're enforcing laws now with no open burning.
So, we used to have a chipper in the village?
We do.
Are you still alive with it?
Yes.
But that's labor intensive.
So that's, you know, back in, years ago, we used to go around in the spring and the fall with the curb side pickup, and we used to go around and chip and pick up the bags. And that's what we're going to have to go back to eventually. Because the days of having open fires are done.
And the DEC's...
They're really cracking down.
Angulation is there.
That's fine, but then if we, if we go back now, we do have a fall pickup, right? We had it last week. Now, that's labor intensive, our crew's going out there.
Yeah.
And they're picking up the bags. And you got to bring them to, are they bringing them to the...
Yes, they're bringing them down to the compost site. But what's happening is, people are going down there and they're throwing all the brush and the debris and the lumber, and we found railroad ties, all kinds of garbage in there. And it's all getting intertwined, and if you had to take it all out piece by piece and chip it, you would spend days down there. Where if it was curb side, nine chance out of 10, most people put it in orderly fashion with all the butts facing one way, so you could pull up and chip it all, and then continue on. It's just, it's, it's getting out of hand, it's just been abused.
But do you think it only happens on the weekends? Could it happen Monday through Friday, when the, when the most commercial guys are working?
Monday through Friday, we pretty much watch it, and everybody has instructions to go out there. If they see somebody out there that they don't know, that looks like that they're not from the village, or a commercial dumper, they go out there and ask them the question, "Are you from the village? Are you a taxpayer of the village?" And nine chance out of 10, they are during the day. It's the weekends, when we leave on a Friday, and we come back in on a Monday, it looks like a tornado went through down there. And I've seen people where I'm on my way to Champlain, and they're coming this way with loads of brush. I'm not going to turn around and come back, because I'm on my way to go somewheres. But this is like on Saturdays and Sundays. It's just not being watched. Which, you know, I agree, there probably should be a Saturday morning where it should be open for a couple hours, you know, four hours maybe, from eight to noon would be nice, but you would have to pay overtime.
Saturday's the biggest day for people, pride and duty. Artwork. I agree with you guys, I'm not disagreeing here, but, you know, we got, you got to be practical about this, it's going to cost us, if we get hit, it's going to cost us dearly.
How much use, Brian, is there, Monday through Friday, eight to four? There can't be that much, there can't be that many people out.
You have, you have on an average, on Monday through Friday, you have an average between 10 to 12 people up there a day, from 7:30 to 4:00. It's constant. You have the same ones all the time that are bringing up leaves and grass clippings weekly, you know?
That's not a problem.
No.
We can compost, so not in trouble. That's not a problem.
And we do compost. The, we haul all the leaves out of there, and there's a big compost pile behind the wastewater treatment facility, that we have separate piles that's been there for years, and we keep rotating them. And we are going to use that topsoil eventually, once it rots down.
Everyone's like, "I just got to turn it."
Got to turn it over. Yeah.
You got to put lime on it.
And if you're one pad, Kelly, you want to clear one pad with brush, right? And there was a whole bunch of kitchen cabinets.
Oh, I know, I know. And it's, when people abuse it, it's a really terrible thing.
That's true.
But I, I do, you know, we, we had this discussion maybe three years ago, four years ago, and it's just very difficult. If we're going to, if we're going to leave this open at all, I think it's very difficult for us to justify, in, taking into consideration all of the abuse, it's very difficult for us to justify eight to four, Monday through Friday. Because most people who work Monday through Friday, whether they work that shift or a different one, a lot of people are doing their cleanup on the weekend. It's just the way it is, right? Maybe over the course of this winter, we can come up with a better way. You know, if we really put our minds to it, or, so that by springtime, we're ready to go with a better schedule for people. I just would like, you know, like you said, yeah, we don't necessarily want to hire someone for a Saturday, but it would be nice to allow people who can't get there during the week.
And really, when you think about it, if somebody from the village goes up there on Saturday and gets rid of their clippings, what do we care? You know, they're paying taxes, you know?
Don't mind that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
When they go up there and dump a whole tree on you, and then bury it so that you can't find it. That's what you mind.
We're, we're left over with so much waste debris, that, you know, I don't know if, you're going to have to get a container eventually, and fill a container and have that sent out, and, you know, you're opening up a...
Put a camera up there, George.
I mean, chips, you can compost. And a lot of people would take wood chips. You know, they, they ask, you know, "If there's a pile of wood chips, can we have some wood chips?", which is fine. I mean, I can remember the days where we used to, if you're out and chipping brush, people would stop us with a truck and say, "What are you doing with the wood chips? Can I have them? Can you dump them?", you know, and they put them around their bushes and stuff, it was, you know?
Just seems like maybe we could come up with a...
Something better.
A better way, that's all, rather than just...
I ain't just, especially the weekend.
That's not my idea.
No, I know, it's a lot.
We're not blaming anybody, it's just, it is a problem.
He has a problem.
Yeah, we abuse the problem, but maybe we could come up with a...
We found, we found, we found refrigerators up there, paint cans, I mean, we're not a...
No.
We're not, we don't run a dump.
And I'm going to say it... Come up with a better way, because it's probably, like you say, it's not our residences that are, that are abusing it.
That are abusing.
So we're penalizing our people for use in the weekend.
So, when you mentioned that, that you're asking the guys if they see people, have they, have they actually had occasion to go over and talk to someone who may not be there properly?
Whenever they see somebody up there, they'll ask them if they're from the village.
Right.
And nine chance out of 10, they'll say, "Yeah, I live at..." They'll give the address, or, you know, "Or we're cutting this for a lady up on Edgewater", you know, they'll tell us, you know? And if they are from...
That's good, yeah. They're doing that, that's fine.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah.
But a lot of times, you see a lot of activity after 4:00 and weekends. It's constant.
Unfortunately, that's probably why most people, though, are able to do their cleaning up.
But there's a lot of people from the outside know that the village works from 7:30 to 4:00, and if nobody's around, they're not going to get questioned. Which, you know, you can't blame them, because if you lived outside the village, you probably tried to do the same thing, because it is getting hard to get rid of. I don't even think the mortars land dump takes it anymore, brush.
Nope.
And I know the village of Champlain is having a hard time getting rid of their brush. They're actually, I heard they're looking to get containers and put it into containers and have Northern haul it away. That could get expensive.
Let's study it. That's enough said. Nice done.
Don't want to do it, you don't want to do it.
That's it for me.
Where are we going to wake the press, or is it...
I haven't been sent out yet?
No, I didn't send it, because I know what the decision is.
Okay.
Let's sit on it for another week or so, or don't do it.
Do you want to at least put a warning out that it's for the village residents, and and the description of what we take and what we don't take?
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
And that if people violate this and get caught, they will be fined?
Put the crime dog up there, Tom.
Yeah.
I have no problem with that, Brian. No, I have no problem with that. I know it's a problem.
At least give a stern warning to people that if they get caught dumping waste debris up there, that they will be fined.
We'll come up with a local village law for illegal use of the dump, by the...
Compost.
Compost.
Yeah, we don't want to call it a dump, we want to call it a compost site.
Exactly.
We don't run a dump.
You'll have DEC here and a ton of bricks going.
Don't say that.
None of those. Okay. All right. So for me, trustee Jefferson.
Okay, and the water storage tank maintenance. The repairs to the water storage tank are now complete. All the welded joints have a stainless steel coupling welded over them. We are now in the process of filling the water storage tank. George tells me it's full right now. We'll then have to complete the required sampling in order to put the water tank back in service. At this time, if we don't encounter any problems, I would anticipate that the water storage tank should be back in service sometime next week.
Hell, we... No.
No?
If Tess comes back tomorrow at noon, okay, the water tank is in service tomorrow at noon.
Really?
And the bags come off.
And the bags come off. And then they will start servicing the hydrants for the winter.
And the only other thing I don't have on the agenda, I haven't really said too much about it, but it's been bothering me for a while. It looks the way that the economy is going, that we're in a recession, there's no doubt about it. Now, a couple of years ago, we got hit with that extra money going into the retirement system, because the return on the, all the state retirements is not working out, so that's something I think we should look at. Because I think we're going to see next year that they're going to do what they did before. We had, it was $50,000 or $100,000 extra that we had to kick in for the retirement. Remember that, Harrison?
Yeah.
So, I don't know what's going to happen, and I'm not a economic forecaster, but the way things are going, you can see, I think we should look at our, our budget that's going to be coming up, and, and we should realize that maybe we have to tighten up a little bit, the village. And we should encourage the state government to tighten up. Well, hey, all the people that are voting, these guys are not going the way we want, we should get rid of them. So, that's one thing I just want to, just take their money when we start thinking about the budget.
I'm going to change, change, Charlie.
Is that it?
Yeah, that's all I have.
Thank you, trustee Jefferson. Trustee Penfield.
See you wearing blue, does that have any designation?
No.
Negative.
No. Conservative.
Conservative.
I have not, I can't possibly follow.
Thank you, trustee Penfield. Trustee Burks.
I am glad that I traveled for zoning and planning order numbers to Lieutenant Tranny in Plattsburgh, and I will notice that, the local officials. But then, form of motion.
Second.
Moved by trustee Burks, seconded by trustee Penfield. Any discussion? There be no discussion. All those in favor vote in your side of the vote.
Aye.
Opposed? You had discussion?
I know, I just wanted you to know I was gonna remember twenty.
Oh. I thought I was going too fast for you.
Where am I going?
Is that it?
There's a fast train coming through town.
You're done?
I am, sir.
Trustee Baker.
Nothing.
Thank you. Trustee Baker. Oh, okay. Madam clerk. Thank you. Arson.
I want to report on the meeting that I went to the county on, I don't remember if it was last Thursday, the prayer for these things, fines wise. But it was a meeting regarding the tax program that the Clint County Treasurer's Office wants to get. They decided that they are going to accept a bid of an Altonale Corporation for the following reasons. The software will provide free, will be provided free of charge to all municipalities. Reduced maintenance fees resulted in savings to the county and municipalities. Computer interface between the county and municipalities, which will streamline collection and re-levee process. For example, there'll be no need to post tax rolls, which the village doesn't. Facilitate balancing process, expedite re-levee process, et cetera. They'll have internet access to tax information for the public, resulting in reduction of telephone calls and lock-ins. And they'll have the ability to accept credit card payments benefiting local and out-of-area taxpayers, that's for payment on the internet only. The maintenance fee, the county will charge us for the next five years, three hundred dollars a year. The first year will be nothing. So that would be a savings to the village of two hundred dollars a year. Now, I don't know if you've seen in the paper or not, but there's a lot of controversy regarding what's going on here. And I received a letter today from BAS, which is the company that we have our current tax program with. And they're letting us know that they are sending a letter protest at the county executive asking that this project be rebid because they have found...